Ready? Everybody ready? There you go.
Look at you in the big seat.
Again, this is only my third meeting running the meeting as Vice Mayor. Mayor Ferrante is in Atlantic City, I guess, hoping he'll do in some...
If we were in a council meeting, that'd be important, but you're the chairman.
Chairman, right. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. This is a meeting of the Community Redevelopment Agency Board's special meeting. It's about 6 o'clock, and we'll get started, and we'll turn it over to Board Member Allison.
Please rise from room 10. Number five.
Thank you. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under our own and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Looks like we have two items, two major items on the agenda for tonight. The item number three is the CRA Resolution Number Two. And normally, the attorney reads this. Would you like me to read this?
Yes, sir.
I think you're making the same amount of money there.
The CRA Resolution Number Two. A resolution of the Community Redevelopment Agency Board of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, implementing year-end fund balance reserves for the Community Redevelopment Fund, providing an effective date, providing for repeal of resolution in conflict herewith, and providing for adoption. And... Is it Anderson, or Brenda?
Brenda. Okay, this is the... Can you hear me now? Yes? This is our fiscal year-end budget amendment, fourth quarter. This is a resolution. The next one that will come before this board and council will be in 60 days when we will have a final amendment, and that'll be in an ordinance. And that will be the final time that we can have any adjustments done to the accounts, and that will be for citywide purposes, right before the final audit. And that's allowable by Florida statutes. These numbers that are before you is adjusting the budget from 1112 fiscal year. These are the revenues and expenditures that were budgeted. And the amounts on page two, it says balance to allocate, 388,348. You now get to allocate or assign or appropriate into four different categories. You get to either allocate to projects, reserve into your sinking fund for future debt payments, reserve to debt payments principal, of course, you don't want to put it into interest, or reserve to refund to the taxing authorities, which are the city of Satellite Beach and Brevard County, in the appropriate percentage. Those are the four categories. And I left room to add the name of the projects you would like to associate them with and the dollar amounts. And we could add them tonight prior to the close of the meeting.
It doesn't have to be to just one of those. It could be to multiples, correct?
Multiple projects, yes, sir.
And I'm sorry, I didn't do the numbers. What's the total left over?
388,348, and that's where it says balance to allocate.
Okay.
And that would be your...
Oh, I see, yeah.
That is the estimated change in your fund balance at the fiscal year end. And again, that might change in case you have any accruals or any outstanding bills that will be coming in between now and 60 days. Like CGA, if they send in a bill for like the last month of September that we haven't received yet, that will be applied to your 1112 fiscal year for work in September. That will go against your 1112 budget. That will be adjusted. And that's what I'll come again to you in 60 days, and that will be amended.
So what we're doing here is we're reallocating the... Yeah, we're reallocating what's left over from this year, yeah?
Correct.
Yeah. And then whatever flows from that, anything left over, we'll talk about for the budget that we discussed last meeting.
This meeting.
Okay.
Will be adjusted again in 60 days.
I have a question. I'm a little confused, because we talked about at the last CRA meeting and also at city council, having a fund balance of $696, well, $600, almost $700,000. So it's now down to 383, because we allocated that. Can you explain that? I don't understand what's happening there.
This is going to be your estimated change in fund balance for fiscal year 1112. That will be added to those numbers.
Added to it?
Yes, ma'am.
So you're saying that the fund balance is really going to be almost a million dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
Cool. Unless we do something with it.
And then I just, on the whereas part, when it says the analysis of 12 months, shouldn't that just say fiscal year 1112 rather than 12 months?
Well, we're doing it for 12 months, so that's standard boilerplate, and we have done that since the inception.
It was a 12-month period. The fiscal year is a 12-month period.
Okay. And then it said special revenue fund.
Yes, ma'am.
Should that say CRA, Community Redevelopment?
It does in the title, but this is listed as a special revenue fund in the accounting. And I have Florida statutes that'll back that up. If you'd like me to read that into...
I do not. I do not want you to read it. I just want, I'm trying to understand why it's a special revenue fund. And then this, I think you've all seen some emails floating around about the $75,000 for the Hunt Pinnacle project. I looked at the contract, and it says that that money should have been put in, should be held in the line item for the A1A Streetscape project. And it's Master A1A Streetscape project, and it's not in that line item. I'm very concerned about that, because you said it was in the reserves. And we do have a contract, and if it's not used for that specific purpose, I think it's a contractual problem. And I did ask for it to be on the agenda next time, but I don't think it should be included in the general fund. It really needs to be in a separate line item for the contract, and it has been in the past.
Okay, that it should be where now? That you wanted to go where?
It says specifically in the contract...
Yes?
That the $75,000 that was given to us, the certified check before February 25, 2011, should be held, maintained in the City Satellite Beach Community Redevelopment Area Streetscape Fund. So that's where it needs to be held, not in reserves. And also, since it was in that lump sum where we took out the 15% to put in the sinking fund, it needs to go back into that $75,000, since it's a contractual obligation. That's all.
Okay, but you decided not to go forward with that, and this was a carryover from 1011.
I understand, Brenda, but there's a contract, and I really just want it done correctly.
Okay, then it can be changed, then. We can move it up into there. I had that there initially.
I don't want to please, I don't want to argue.
No.
There's a contract here, and it says where the money needs to be, and it's earmarked for that project. And at the last council meeting, you said that the money may have to go back to the developer, because we did, we chose not to do the project. So we can't just dump it in reserves and spend it for whatever we want to do.
I'm not saying...
And that's an issue that we're looking into.
And you're right, there is a contractual agreement, and in speaking with Mr. Vaughn from Hunt Pinnacle, there are three options that he's looking at. One is to receive that back as 75K. One is to potentially allocate it to another project, or to ask us to go ahead with the mast arm that contract originally had obligated us both to be parties too. So he is thinking about it, and he will get back with me on it. And that's where we have left it.
And I also spoke with Mr. Vaughn, if you remember correctly, the CRA. We had talked about the mast arm when we chose not to do it, and the former city manager and I were going to sit down with Mr. Vaughn and discuss maybe an alternative to the mast arm. Because the point is, they want something at the end. They own Shearwater Drive. We do not own it.
Right.
We, you know, the DOT owns A1A. And so the point was, they did it to have something there, whether it's a signal or decorative pavers or something there. And we were going to sit down and discuss an alternative. He's open to it, but, you know, they may come back and say that we have to return the $75,000.
Yes, and I did have that in the original budget, and it was changed. So, you know, and I don't know what to tell you, but I had sent that to CGA on July 23rd, and it was in the budget.
Let's just correct it, please. CGA's not here to discuss it. Let's just do it correctly and move forward.
Are you sure would it be worth sitting down with him while he's cogitating on his options? Would it be worth maybe you and Ann sit...
He's not in the state. He's in, I think, Texas.
Texas, Texas. He's in Texas.
Maybe come in in Ann's office and do a telecon with him and talk him through...
Well, he specifically emailed me and said he will get back with me after he finishes assessing it, and I'm sure he'll be talking with some other people about it as well.
Contract's pretty clear about what's going to be.
It is.
It was a mast arm.
That is correct.
And we have an easement, we have an easement that's recorded at the county for a portion of that. So it's pretty specific, and they're also having some issues with that 100 acres. It's right now, you know, it's very restricted what we can do with 100 acres. You can't even do large commercial there. It's 545 residential units. So they're trying to work with the government to relieve some of these restrictions, and, you know, they probably could use the $75,000, to be honest. And so I just want to make sure that we don't spend it or something else, or dedicate part of it like we did towards the sinking fund.
Good idea.
Because we do have a contractual obligation.
That's correct. Should we then wait, or what do you want? I mean, we can assign it to one of these lines, or what we...
It specifically says that...
Put it in that line.
Yeah, the Streetscape.
Exactly.
So take 75K out of the 388, 348, and put it back in the Streetscape. Is that right?
Seventy one.
I guess it would be the Master A1A Streetscape is probably where it came from.
Correct.
Right.
Or should be. Whether or not it was there or not, I have no idea, but it needs to be put there, because that's what we're looking for.
Yeah, because we also have a resolution on that also with the city. Yeah, I followed you all the way back.
The other issue I have is regarding the 179 for the FDOT improvement. Because a project in the CRA doesn't mean it's a CRA project. And that contract with the FDOT is with the city, not with the CRA.
We discussed that last meeting.
I know, but I didn't look at the contract. I didn't have the contract in hand, and since then, I went on to the clerk of courts and got the contract.
That's a deduction.
I'm sorry, the DOT project.
That's a deduction, the revenues that's coming out of the...
But what I'm saying is, I don't think it should have came from the CRA revenues to begin with, because it's a city project. The contract is with the city. Now, if the CRA and the city agree to share the costs, that would be something different.
Doing MOU kind of thing?
Yeah, but we never did that. And I'm just, what I'm saying, and what I'm trying to get to, is our responsibility is to do things correctly, and we haven't done that correctly. Whether or not the CRA kicks in some of that money, that money should have came out of the general fund. It's a city project. The contract is with the city. And so I just want to put it out there. Whatever this board decides, it's fine with me. But I think it probably should have gone to the, the city probably should approach the CRA and say, are you willing to pay for a portion of this? This is not a slush fund where you just pay for everything just because it's in the South Patrick Drive part or the A1A part, or, I mean, pretty much all of our commercial property is in the CRA. So I think we really need to be careful and consider, not saying we can't go back and say, yeah, we're going to pay for this, but you also have to have an agreement, and, because the DOT is not going to sign an agreement with the CRA.
It is in the plan, by the way, with FDOT. It is in our plan, that they will be partners with us. We do have correspondence and email with FDOT and the CRA director and the city manager. It is in our minutes with the, and Scott Rhodes, you also second this, with the CRA Advisory Committee approving that with FDOT, with the CRA director and FDOT stating that the funds, if it was not funded, that the funds will come out of the CRA funds. We also have a resolution, 893, stating from the city that the city manager can sign the contract with FDOT for this project.
On behalf of the CRA?
Yes. So we have it from start to finish.
From both council and CRA?
I didn't hear, was there a CRA approval?
The CRA Advisory Committee.
That was the advisory committee. That was not the CRA itself.
And according to all of the charter, the advisory committee is, was just the same as the board.
Hmm. The CRA Advisory Committee is an advisory committee.
To the CRA.
Yeah, to the CRA. The CRA, the board is the, was the council then.
And the council is the one that approved it.
But they can't sit as the council, they have to sit as the Community Redevelopment Agency.
Well, they're the ones that had approved it.
Are they saying CRA board approved it? Do you have the FDOT agreement there?
I'm sorry, I forgot, but the FDOT agreement is with the city council, the city of Satellite Beach, not the Community Redevelopment Agency.
Well, then that's what you got to do.
I'm just, I'm not, you know, if the money ultimately comes out of the CRA fund, I'm fine with it, but you need to have the proper documentation notifying it.
Right, and there seems to be a lot of documentation there, even in the JPA. I mean, in the, in the original CRA plan that indicated that they would be working with FDOT. The thing about it is, is that FDOT would not sign specifically with the CRA, because they did not feel that they...
I totally understand.
Yeah, I know you do.
But the city council, we are a separate board. I'm sorry. We're the same people with a separate, plus two.
Who voted on that, Brenda?
The city council and the CRA still have to negotiate...
Right.
An agreement.
And who, my question is, who actually voted again on that?
From the advisory committee, or from...
To, for the project, for the CRA. Was it the actual CRA board, or was it the advisory?
On the resolution, it was the mayor that had signed it. That's what I have here, but on the minutes where the CRA director went in front of the, it looks like the council, Beadle read it into the minutes, JPA, mayor, agreed, council, it was the council that had moved. It looks like it was...
It looks like it was the council.
This was that the CRA director expected FDOT will fund this, if not, the funds will come from the Community Redevelopment Funds.
But the FDOT is funding it. We're paying for it.
Well, I understand that. I'm just...
Paying us back.
Yeah, this is March 17, 2010, so that's quite a lot.
The point really is moot, because eventually, we're going to get paid back. But the fact is...
Right.
City council can't make decisions on behalf of the CRA. The CRA has to make those decisions.
So what would be the quickest way to make this right?
Figure out how much you're going to contribute from the CRA to the city for it.
And enter an agreement with the city, but...
Agreement with the city, because you're right, if you have a contract with, with the city and FDOT, this is probably the reason that the CRA got in so much trouble in the past by, by doing this.
You know, I, it's kind of like, I'm city council and ed CRA, and I'm like, hey, just pay for it, so I'm just going to find a res... The resolution should have came from the CRA. And, you know, that's kind of why we got in the bailiwick we got into before, because we really need to be careful. And it's really hard when you're city council and CRA to take, sort of, those tasks.
I just want to get the details straightened out. The 179 is a grant, is a grant or funding by the state, right?
No.
And they've given us that, it's money from the state. They're going to reimburse us.
We pay, we pay the 179.
I'm not talking about right now, I'm talking about the whole picture. The state has appropriated 179 for that thing, for that project, right?
If constructed by the end of this year.
If constructed by the end of this year. And we do have, we do not have those funds, and we need to advance them, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And we get paid when it's completed? Okay.
Well, we pay the contractor, and then we're reimbursed. Is that correct, Alan? And the actual bid came in much lower, did it not? What, was it about 125? Yeah, so it actually came in less than...
Well, they still going to pay us 179, or they're going to pay us...
No, they...
No.
They got to pay that contract, right?
I had to ask.
What is the deduction on the revenue side of 179 from?
Are you looking at the resolution?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the Streetscape money, right?
That was the...
Are you on page one?
The cover page. The cover page of this.
Okay, well, that is on the revenue side, since we did not receive it.
Okay.
So it went down to zero.
Okay.
This is on 1112.
Okay, so we don't have that money on hand to spend, and if we want to spend it this year, we've got to take it out of the 388.
No, now it is budgeted in your 1213 year budget.
But you got to finish it by the end of the year?
Okay. Okay, so stop...
So we need to, we need to figure out how much money the CRA is going to partner with the city, so that we can get this project done, and then we get reimbursed.
You don't pay for the entire project, you partner with the city and...
Okay, well, that's, that's easy enough.
I think we need to put that off...
I have it on the agenda for the next week.
For the next item.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I thought that it'd already be on the next agenda.
Okay.
We just pulled the 179 out of the current three, remainder of the 313, 348, and mark it for project, you know, South Patrick Drive Streetscape.
Alls you're doing is bringing these down...
And then put in reserves, and then that way, we've got it...
You can't put it in reserves. It has to be allocated, because it's funds rolling over from last year. You have to allocate it to a project.
Can you allocate a hundred percent of the cost of the project from the CRA?
Excuse me, you're just bringing these down to zero. That's all you're doing. On that 179, you're bringing that down to zero. It's a, these are just budget numbers that you haven't used from 1112.
Okay. So the 179 we're talking about, that's money that we're going to have in the next calendar fiscal year, right?
Yeah, that you've already budgeted in 1213.
So we don't need to discuss, we don't need to deal with that right now, because that's part of the next fiscal year?
Yes.
And we aren't going to spend that this fiscal year?
No, we have to spend it this year. The project has to be, well...
No, no, the fiscal year, fiscal year.
Yeah, you don't like December 13th.
So we don't need to resolve, we need to resolve that problem next meeting.
Right.
But we don't need to, because the 179 does come out, because it was money that was in the budget as revenue that we never got. So that's why it's coming out of the revenue item.
Right.
And then it goes into next year, but you put that next year in the 20, in the 2013 budget, you have it as a revenue item.
It's already in there.
Okay.
The 12, you're, we're closing out last...
Okay, so I think we can fix that next month.
Okay, well, it's on the agenda, but I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware about it, aware of it, because I don't, I think this council is pretty adamant about not making this thing the same as that we made last time in this...
I agree, 100%.
Transferring money back and forth, or just spending it on projects that are, they could be in the CRA, but they don't, they're not. Just because it's in the CRA doesn't mean it's a CRA project.
So, but don't we also want to give them direction that if a MOU, or whatever the agreement mechanism is, is allowed, or is required, that that comes to?
I think I did, I don't remember.
Yeah, that should be pretty for us to look at the next meeting.
Yeah.
That's right.
So there probably needs to be something, what, from the CRA to council, yeah?
In reality, how it stands right now is, we have 179.5 allocated next year against a specific project, but we don't have any, we haven't authorized the expenditure of it. So if the city wants to do that project, start that project before we put money on it, they got to do it on their own nickel. And really, in the end, it doesn't make any difference, because it's going to get reimbursed to whoever does it.
Yeah.
But if you're going to start on it next month, before we have another meeting, those initial payments have to come out of the city budget until the CRA agrees to partner on it.
Did you mention nickel?
We're supposed to start next, soon, right?
That's about all we've got, is a nickel.
What's more than I thought?
We're lean in the city.
That's what I thought, you're doing much better than I thought if you had a nickel.
I think the theory...
You're way ahead of the economy in general.
It was a little bit disturbing to me that the advisory board, it didn't go to the CRA. Advisory board, really, is just an advisory board, has no authority to do anything.
I'm going to see if we can't find something else on that, too.
And there may be?
Yeah.
There may be.
I'm going to find it, and see if there is.
Yeah, well, back then, the CRA board would pretty much routinely approve whatever the advisory board recommended, so it may have been buried in a minimal reference to something, because they just approved it.
You make a good point. We want to be completely above board with everyone else.
I agree.
Absolutely.
I'm glad you brought that up, Cheryl.
And it's, you know, we do have to have the construction done by the end of this year. We forfeit that, we could lose those monies. So we're on a pretty tight...
Could be done or started.
Done, complete, and that's...
By October of next year?
No, December 31st of this year.
So we need to, we need to get CRA to make an agreement with city council as far as funding the project, giving the city the money to fund the project.
Has the city awarded the contract?
Yes.
Yes, it's been awarded, and like I say, it came in at less than 125K, and it was supposed to have started this...
That's the other thing, like, we should have awarded the contract.
It was supposed to have started this week.
If we're paying for it.
Weather permitting.
It's a learning, I guess, a learning experience, but we need to be very careful.
Well, when's the first bill come due? The bill every 30 days?
I'm not sure. You'd have to ask Alan on that, and he stepped out for a moment, but he'll be back.
He probably wants to get rid of the...
Or the city, I guess, to do it.
Timing, though. That's three weeks before. Is it two weeks before our next meeting?
October 11th is the meeting, so it is...
They're not going to invoice between Alan's cheerleaders? They're not going to invoice between October 11th.
It's really just a joint project between the CRA and the city.
But what I was going to say was, given the timing, the fact that they want to start next week, right?
Monday.
Would it be, would we save time if this board tonight passed some sort of CRA resolution, asked, or telling the city that we will share...
Partner with them.
Or that we will pay this cost if they ask?
I don't know. I don't, I don't look at it.
If there's going to be a payment that's possibly going to be issued, well, right now, the city doesn't have the money to pay. If you got invoiced for $30,000 for that project, you don't have money to pay for it. Is that correct, Ann?
So where do you...
I would defer to Brenda on that.
Is that correct? They worked for a week, two weeks, they gave $30,000 for progress payment, or they got a startup cost of $30,000. If they build that today, could you pay it out of city funds?
The first payment will be due at the end of October. So it all depends on what, how you...
Yeah, that'll be okay.
Okay, there's no startup fund? There's no startup payment, mobilization payment?
It'll work until, you know, every 30 days, they put in...
Well, that's pretty good. Yeah, a lot of times, there's a mobilization payment that's due on commencement.
And then, just curious, you, the engineering drawing, so that money, just, I don't know if you know this or not, and this has nothing to do with it. That money come out of the CRA budget or the city budget and the permitting?
Actually, we did all drawings in-house.
Okay.
Okay, great.
See if it does for, you know.
Okay.
They had sealed them.
Oh, well, okay.
But, but, uh, C-Rod did all the.
Who did the CRA, did the CRA pay that, for that?
For the ceiling?
And for the drawing?
Uh, that probably came out of Engineering Services, which is in the general fund, right?
Yeah, that's the contract.
Should the CRA have paid for that?
No, because this is a unique, because it's a city project that, basically, we're just paying for the construction on according to the budget.
Well, if we're gonna get reimbursed the money, then why do we need to go through all the mechanisms of trying to come up with a sharing agreement? Why can't we, as a CRA, today, approve funding that contract price?
Yeah, right.
Or we might have a public notice requirement, why can't we approve funding that con, we're getting the money back anyway. I'd rather not have a complicated MOU that says we'll pay half and you'll pay half, and that's nuts. If we're getting the money back anyway, let's just pay the bill, let the progress job get done, and it must be a public notice thing, that's something we can handle at tonight's meeting. So I'd rather just get the record straightened out and not worry about administrative.
Let's just make the, yeah, yeah, let's just make the decision, make it legal, and press.
Okay, I, I would move that we use CRA funds to fund the South Patrick Seascape contract that's been awarded to, that's been recently awarded by the city in the amount, in the amount of one twenty-five?
See?
No, I can only, uh, same people that did our, um, project on, uh.
The trade?
No, and, at the, at the beach access, and the, uh, beach outfalls, or two, Taga.
Good, then we approve it to Ataga in the amount shown in the contract that's been executed by the city, with the understanding that when the city receives reimbursement from FDOT, not with the understanding, with the requirement that the city refund us for that money when they get it from FDOT.
Yeah, that one, that's good.
I'll second that.
And, and, and that's good, you don't have to give the money to the city, and then the city gives it to them, or you could, the CRA can give it straight to?
No, the money will go from the D- D-O-T to the city, and the city has to transfer.
No, but the CRA money, does the CRA money have to get transferred to the city, so it can be, we can, CRA money can go directly?
This approval, my understanding is, we would cut the, cut check right out of the CRA account, out of our twenty, we're starting, we're starting fiscal year thirteen next week, so it would come out of the fiscal year thirteen money, and that's how the check would get rid, is that right, Brenda?
And Brenda spends CRA money, and she spends city money, so she can do both.
I thought you were gonna say she spends money on her quarter, but that was wrong.
That's two.
There's a lot of controls in place, I'll tell you that.
The dykes have been built and they're strong.
And then, you know, I'm just, two, because that one seventy-nine, when we did, did the fifteen percent, we took fifteen percent of that and put it in the sinking fund. You know, and, and so this was some of the things I'm thinking, geez, well, some of this stuff was allocated to these projects, or basically you had an agreement, just like the seventy-five, and you took fifteen percent of that.
The sinking fund is gonna be based on this three eighty-eight, three forty-eight, and it's gonna be a percentage of F-D-O-T we agreed to when we get to it?
Right, but I'm just saying, it does it.
It's not in there anymore.
Right, I'm just saying, overall, you have to be careful what, what, what you're dealing with in some of the contracts we have, it's not.
You do, and we really gotta be careful with our details.
Yeah, okay.
So, we're good with that, Brenda?
If I got anything.
You think that's proper, the way we did that? Okay, can you take a vote?
Oh, on that, oh, go ahead, sorry, I'm moving on.
Oh, public comment?
Sorry? Do you entertain some public comment? Want public comments?
Yeah.
Mr. Jigudis?
The C-council is public, I'm not sure he's here all day, he's here more than we are.
Name and, uh, resident or non-resident?
Sorry, Ron. Ron Jigudis, resident, Satellite Beach, my wallet's not here. Uh, this is a special meeting, and this is not an agenda item for this vote at this point. I know you're trying to fast-track it, but is this procedurally possible tonight to do this? That's all I have to ask, thank you.
Actually, I think he's probably correct.
I think you are correct, yeah, I think, oh, I heard the city charter says if it's a special meeting, you have to stick to the agenda items, and I suppose the CRA, uh, probably follows those same guidelines.
I would think that's appropriate.
Okay, so let's.
Have to be an agenda item at the next meeting.
Correct.
Read it again.
Okay.
Sorry.
Do you want public comment? We'll, we'll table that until the next CRA meeting.
That'll be October eleventh.
Okay.
Okay, you still have three hundred and thirteen thousand, three forty-eight to allocate. Keep going.
Okay, now, the last meeting, I'm sorry, did the last meeting, did we say that we put fifteen percent or whatever that number was in the sinking fund? So, that's our starting point, is to knock fifteen percent off of that.
Oh, you want fifteen percent of the entire amount for three eighty-eight?
Well, I think we, I think we wanna assume we're gonna take that one seventy-nine out, yeah.
Oh, you want to pull one seventy-nine?
One seventy-nine is not in that three forty, three eighty-eight.
Oh.
Is that right, Brenda, the one seventy-nine is not in that money?
No, no, no. But the, the seventy-five is. The, the seventy-five we're taking out of there.
Yeah, so that makes it three thirteen?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Three thirteen.
So fifteen percent of three thirteen?
Now you want fifteen percent off of that?
Yep, it's three thirteen, what, Brenda?
Oh, three thirteen, three forty-eight.
Three thirteen, three forty-eight, times one one five, so that's forty-seven oh two and twenty cents to the sinking fund?
Yeah, not, no pennies.
No pennies?
No.
Forty-seven oh two.
Yeah.
Okay. Which takes us down to.
What you got? Two sixty-six, three forty-six. Oh, damn it. Two sixty-six, three forty-six.
Three, I'm sorry, two fifty-five?
Two sixty-six, three forty-six.
Okay. And then, some of this money was previously pinned to beach access? And has to be used for that because it was a three-year project?
No, you just have to disperse it back into previous projects.
Oh, just disperse it back into it, okay.
Or one of those other categories, whatever you'd like.
Those categories of things that were existing last year?
No. Well, I, I think you have to.
Project reserve.
You gotta put the one, you have to put, no, you, you, you can't put it, you can't put it in reserve.
Says here you can reserve it to a project, right?
Yes, you can. Well, I, I, okay, specific, I thought you just said reserve.
No, no, reserve to a project.
Specific project, and I think that, obviously, the seventy-five thousand dollars has to be.
Yeah, but that's gone first, that's not even included. That's already been taken out. Seventy-five came right off the top.
So, the beach access, I think we committed to that, it's just now how much?
There's two sixty-six left, what was the total?
Two sixty-six, three forty-five.
No, I mean, what was the total for the beach access?
Seventy, sixty-seven?
That we had committed before.
Sixty-seven, that's what's showing here, is that the correct amount?
Beach access improvements was, uh, the final one was ninety thousand, eight thirty, in twelve thirteen. Oh, my.
I'm sorry?
We took two hundred and thirty-one in our budget that we approved, that city council, two hundred and thirty-one, eight four seven in the beach access.
Like, there was three, three different beach accesses. Three different accesses that we looked at, right, on that?
I think there were probably five or six, but if you guys narrowed it down.
I'm just.
It was two thirty-one. What was the total again, Cheryl?
Four, oh, hold on, no, I just wrote on there.
It's two thirty-one? Eight forty-seven?
Correct.
If that's what we said before, we should stick with that.
But that was eleven twelve. It said CRA board recommends fiscal year two thousand, two, twelve thirteen, twelve thirteen. There's a, put a nice chunk of change in there, yes.
That, if you put all that into the.
Two thirty-one, eight four seven.
That leaves you with thirty-four, four ninety-eight.
Um, I don't understand what this, um, A-one-A DeSoto property project, well, that was only five grand. And then we have South Patrick Drive Improvement, we know Master A-one-A Streetscape, obviously, if we do the Master A-one-A Streetscape, we're gonna have other costs to contribute towards that mast arm.
This next year?
Now, this is the fun, from the fund balance.
No, no, this is the decreases that were taken out from our expenditures.
Remember Jeff had said that you're breaking out the beach cast, beach access improvements into two separate items? One is for eleven twelve fiscal year, which is the two thirty-one, and then the twelve thirteen beach accesses of ninety thousand, eight hundred and thirty.
Right, this three eighty-eight is eleven twelve money that has to go to, can go to eleven twelve projects next year, but it has to be allocated to eleven twelve projects.
No, you could allocate it to twelve thirteen projects.
To continue along that category of beach access.
In twelve thirteen?
Yeah.
Yes, you could add it to that ninety thousand, eight thirty, instead of to the twelve, eleven twelve.
Right, because none of this is, none of this is three eighty-eight, this is new money, this is money that we.
Right.
Have not expended last year, and we're using it to, to put it towards projects in general that were existing last year, because of that three-year rule.
But he had said if we had a negative, he said to take it out of the twelve, of the eleven twelve beach access line. Remember he had specified that? That there was a negative in the numbers that I came back to you with?
Yep.
He said to take it out of that two hundred and thirty-one thousand. So, these numbers that I'm coming to you with now, you can add to the twelve thirteen line of that ninety thousand. You see what I mean?
Yeah.
So you could add to those numbers.
We can use this money next year on that project.
Yes.
That sounds pretty simple.
And the three projects we approved were two, the three projects we've considered were two thirty-one?
No, that's, that's just the beach access.
But we, we bet, the beach ac, we, we talked about going along with three beach access projects the last meeting?
That's it?
I'm just trying to keep my notes, bringing them with me.
That's the only thing we.
What other ongoing projects besides the beach access do we have that are continuing from eleven twelve to twelve thirteen?
Well, the, um, well, the A-one-A DeSoto project, I don't know why, what that.
It's not legal to apply it to new projects for twelve thirteen, is it?
New line items.
That's what I mean. For example, like, we couldn't take the one that you're talking about and use eleven twelve money to pay for that, the, the crosswalk stuff? Because it's a new project in twelve thirteen.
Yeah, and the point is to keep the money, keep investing back into the community, and not, you know, money, synergy, and things like that.
That's what I'm saying, but we would be doing that, it would just, we would be using last year's money to pay for this year's project.
Is it in the plan?
The streets?
Yeah, yeah.
The, the crosswalk?
Yeah, well, connectivity, Kathy isn't. If it's in the, if it's in the plan, then you can do that. I don't know about that, I would be hesitant to, to approve that, um, just because it's in the plan, I think it needs to be allocated from a. That's what this board. In other words, the money was appropriated already, and you need to now do it within three years, um. And that's what you're doing, you're appropriating it to a project, as long as it is in the plan, you are doing that within the board's rights.
As long as it's done within three years?
Yes.
And as long as the project's in the plan?
Yes.
But it doesn't have to be the same year, you don't have to use same-year money to pay for the same-year project. In other words, you can pay for next year's project with this year's money, as long as there, it's in the plan.
I gotta look back, that's some of my understanding of it, my understanding was, in year one, you approve a three, a project that's gonna take three years to do, and then you can spend the money for, then you can hold that money from year one and spend it over the next three years, it's gonna take three years to do it, like, the big park project probably took over two years.
Oh, yeah.
But then you can't now find a new line item that wasn't in there, like the crosswalks you wanna do, and then put it against there. It's gotta be against a project that was existing and approved to be done and just didn't get done, which would be the beach access. We just didn't get it contracted out and done.
That's, that's my understanding as well, um.
That's my understanding.
So you could never add a project? No, of course you can.
Not with old money, not with old money. Not with old money.
I don't see how this is old money, because you're still using.
It's eleven twelve money, right?
And you're in eleven twelve.
We're in eleven, we're still in eleven twelve.
So I'm not, I'm not getting where it's old money.
We're not gonna spend the money in eleven twelve.
We're approving the.
You're appropriating it for that project.
Eleven twelve.
To be spent within three years. Well, I just, I, I.
I see what you're saying.
I'm, I'm confused why I was, I'm confused. It would've been better if the city staff came back with recommendations on how to disperse the money based on the previous project, instead of us trying to figure it out, it's, it's, uh.
But, 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 but here we are, and if that's the case, and, and that is a good project you, you're looking at, why can't we do that? Why can't we go ahead and tag that project, because it is eleven twelve now, we would be appropriating the money in eleven twelve, and maybe even be able to start that project in eleven twelve? Who knows, maybe they can finish it, I don't know, but it would at least be an eleven twelve project being paid with, with eleven twelve money, what's that?
We have two days.
All they gotta do is go break ground, right?
Two days, they can do it fiscal year, not the year.
By the end of the calendar year, she said.
No, 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 fiscal, fiscal.
Yeah, they, they can do it by Sunday.
Don't they work weekends?
Yeah, I think they are.
I'm thinking for, uh, two hundred and something thousand.
I just get the feeling like it's, it's our history of it, you know, I'm reconsidering about it, you know, the way Brenda described was probably right, but I'd rather not, I'd rather be more careful this year.
I would too, I wouldn't wanna get ourselves into trouble, I guess.
Well, I don't wanna look like we're in an end-of-the-year spending frenzy, we've got money, let's spend it on something, and we're gonna spend it on something that wasn't even thought of two weeks ago, three weeks ago, three weeks ago. So, I'd rather stick that money, just to be on the safe side, this stuff like the beach access, it's been on the books, and they kinda got plans for it, and at least, don't need rough concepts for it and stuff, we've seen pictures of how they're gonna do it a long time ago. It's nothing new out of the box, it's an old project, it's just.
Which, the, which?
The beach access things.
Well, why not do some in, into the South Patrick Drive improvement, other than the money that's gonna be reimbursed in case there's additional items we wanna do?
And then if we don't use it, what, what do we do with the money?
The next, next year, well, this has been a, a project we picked for, that we haven't really.
See, when we talked a little bit last year, we just thought that the beach access things are a continuing thing, and they're gonna be continually three-year plans to do beach access, and so the money that's left over next year from twelve thirteen could be tagged to a beach access project that's gonna, group of projects that's gonna take more than three years, three years or up to three years. Does that make sense? I don't know if that makes sense, that makes sense.
Alan, would, would it be worth putting any money away for, um, maintenance of beach access? Because you, you have to do, you just don't do projects, you also do daily make, or not daily, probably, but regular maintenance.
This is where your hats are crossing with the CRA, just because it's in the CRA, doesn't mean the CRA pays for it. And, um, even though we improve it, they've always improved the beach accesses, so you can't just think of.
And, and I did have a conversation with Jeff about this and asked those questions.
I know.
The only two properties that the CRA is the fee simple owner, or, or, to, that carry, that hold the deed are Peg Legs and Sunrise. But beach access, the CRA is not supposed to be, you know, that's a city function for maintaining that. We'll be in big trouble if we do that, I've been asking some of those questions, uh, as.
It makes sense, because the CRA paid for them to be built, why can't they pay for them to be?
Not all, not all, they're gonna be, county money, state money, I mean.
But the question is too, who owns the property? Now, Peg Legs is owned, and Sunrise is actually owned by the CRA, but that's it. All the other properties in the city, beach access and everything, are, are owned, are deeded to the city, but the CRA owns both Peg, and I, I pulled that up off the appraiser's, uh, website, because it was purchased by the city, but then the CRA was deeded to the CRA, so that's the way that works, so they do, CRA actually physically, you know, is, it's deeded to them, so, you know.
So what's it cost to cut the grass on those two pieces of property?
Well, that's what we're working on.
Because if that's, if that's a CRA responsibility to cut the gra, if we own those properties, we should be reimbursing the city for cutting the grass, seriously.
Which means we should have a maintenance fund of some sort.
We do, I think we did, I think we did, I think they, CGA put that in the budget. But we can't do, we can't do that with these, uh.
No, no, we cannot.
No, 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 I think, I think they did, actually, I don't know, they did have it in there, it was maintenance, property maintenance. Property maintenance fees, five grand.
Well, that's gotta be bumped up, probably.
Let's figure it out, let's, if, if that's, if it's the beach accesses that we wanna do, let's go ahead and do it.
I agree.
We can kick this around.
I mean, the, the beach access is the core of Satellite Beach, from outsiders' perspectives, the people thinking moving here is how, much and how nice is our access to the water? So I don't have any problem with doing, that's, seems to me like a core function.
Should we do different accesses than we discussed already, the three that we allocated for this coming year? We'd have additional beach access?
Yes, we do, and they have fewer parking places, I'm trying to think, um, that John Stone gave to me. Um, there are a couple other ones with maybe two parking places and this type of thing. The ones we had looked at, the three, were twelve, twelve, and eight, I think, uh, for parking, and that's one of the reasons for choosing them, because they did afford that type of activity, and I think with some of the others, um, there are some homes that are right there, and there isn't the parking that's available, but it doesn't mean that you can't dress that up and so on, too. It's just, right, and it would just be more of a, you know, uh, access by bike or by, by walking rather than parking, you just won't have the parking, though.
You know, we could just stick the rest after the, after the sinking fund money, just stick the rest in beach access, and with the, those three projects to be done first, and then we can apply the remaining funds to whatever's less that we can afford. Because like, if there's two parking places, we may be able to afford to dress that up, but might not be able to afford four parking places.
Right.
But that, that money is in there, that money then is all there for a clearly defined, pre-existing, pre-approved project, which is beach access, and we don't have to worry about any fine lines.
I would just call that, when you make your motion, I would just call that beach accesses twelve thirteen. You already have a line in there, twelve, eleven, twelve beach access improvements?
Right.
Then just say you're gonna allocate that balance to twelve thirteen beach access improvements. This way you don't have to specify which ones it is, and then it's up to the board which ones they would like to go ahead and.
And then, your records will show that the twelve, eleven, twelve money was dumped in the twelve thirteen beach access money, so that an audit trail will exist showing.
Well, you already have money allocated in there.
Okay. They got sixty-seven thousand, don't you think?
Right now, um, for twelve thirteen, you already have ninety thousand, eight thirty, in which this money now will be added.
Yeah, and that'll, and there'll be an audit trail on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Wow, that's, that's a lot, and I, you know, I understand the beach accesses, and, and we've done a great job, but it is a citywide function, I just think A-one-A is really suffering the connectivity on A-one-A. You know, we haven't really done much on the west side of A-one-A.
Next year, this, this, next year, Cheryl.
I know, but it, we do have it in, we could still use some of that money, because it is in here as, um, Master A-one-A Streetscape. Just saying, that's.[1741.74]
Yeah, we could.
You could do other improvements that are, you know... We do have great beach... We are gonna have...
That's actually a good point, because remember we said that the CRA's main goal, number-one goal, is gonna be to fix the original problems that caused the CRA to be stood up to begin with. And that is the non-conforming lots along A1A and what's gonna be done about them. And I would imagine that would be the fund that would... that would fund, finance those fixes.
It's big funds.
So that's a great point. I think we need to put, you know, a relatively substantial amount of money into that fund to prep it for...
And if we can work with Hunt and do like a decorative crosswalk or something, we can continue that theme along A1A and start doing some connectivity, because it is a... It's a ruffled walk on the west side of A1A.
Cheryl, when you say decorative, you're talking about, is that the... It's not the banding, it's...
No, the banding. We'll get to that later. I'll explain that later. But you had originally 175 in there. Put 175 back. Instead of the 75 for Hunt, put, you know, the 175... Or 75 for Master A1A, just change it to 175.
So 100,000 more?
So we gotta reduce the amount. We got three, we got a pot of 266, 346 to work with. That's the money we have to work with?
See, I almost think if we're serious about the A1A quarter, I almost think we put half of that into that, into that fund. If we can always...
And I don't really have any heartache with that, but then we have to reduce the beach access fund. So if you wanna take the 266 and split it in half, 133, and put half in each pile?
That's what I'm thinking, because we were pretty... We were pretty... We were pretty adamant last time that we were gonna fund the beach access... Or, yeah, the beach access fund, and we did that for 1213. It's pretty healthily, and we substantially built that up for 1213, so...
I mean, yeah.
Beam me up, Scotty.
Where's a cop when you need it?
No, that's a good balance between the two.
Yeah, I'd like to see some along A1A, some visible...
We're starting fixing no problem.
So do you wanna take the 266, 346 and split it between beach access and Streetscape? And we've got some money to work with in both categories?
So that's 133 plus 75.
A1A, Master Streetscape?
But the 75 already in there? Yeah.
Well, we're gonna put the HP money back.
We're hoping, yep.
If we put the HP money back, yeah.
We already did.
So let's make a motion. 133, I can't do the math. I can't do the math.
You can round it, round it somehow, so it's...
Well, 133 plus 75 is...
Well, we don't talk about 75 right now. 250. We don't have the 75 right now.
No, just talking about the 266, you know, round it all in.
Yeah, out of the 266, 346, that has to be allocated for 1112, yeah. Projects were on the books in 1112. I'll move that we split that 50% going to beach access and 50% going to our pre-existing Streetscape item. A1A Streetscape. A1A Streetscape item. So it'd be roughly 133.
Okay, 133, 175... Far.
Three.
173. And 172, right? It's 133, 173, and 133, 172, if you split it in half. You need even dollars, right?
Yeah, and then when you add in the 47,000, that's still... Okay, 'cause the...
Okay.
The 388's coming down by 75,000, because they were...
I'll second it.
Okay.
Public discussion. Public input?
The resident name is the straightener outer. The straightener outer. Roger Goodis, resident. You're putting 133 in the Master A1A Streetscape. I just wanna go back to one item I brought up before at one of the meetings. We had Ordinance 1049. Did anybody look that up to see whether we're meeting the guidelines? Because it relates to an ordinance passed for the capital improvements projects that was gonna be funded by the CRA that was sent off to the state. I don't know if the numbers went there or not.
I know which one you're referring to, the 1049 CRA?
That was, yeah, that was... And I don't wanna, if you have so many minutes, I'm taking up the...
I mean, you got 133 going in there, but I believe there was more that was allocated to the state. But that's something maybe that needs, will need to be corrected going forward as a budget amendment in the following year. But that needs to be looked at yet carefully.
All of these... Oh, sorry, Ron.
That proposed...
I'll lose the tentative on what happens in the next 60 days.
Yeah, and it was part of the comp plan.
That's right. It was part of the comp plan.
We were actually very uncomfortable approving that, I remember. At least I was, so...
Best way.
I can look at that 1049. I forgot to look it up.
And then... I know how you're allocating it right now. I still believe that there... I guess we're putting into the sinking fund 47,000?
15% of the total.
Okay, all right. That's a good start.
That's great.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, as a technical matter, we had a motion and a second on the floor, and we kinda talked about it not being appropriate yet, but we never withdrew it. So I'm gonna withdraw the previous motion I made about the previous motion that I made. Just I just wanted to have it clear on the record that it's not there anymore.
Let's see if we're north side of... More public comment?
Okay, there you go.
Some more public comment? Okay.
We do have information in the plan about adding landscaping along the corridors in our city and...
That'd be part of A1A Streetscape. So we can talk specific projects next time around.
Well, yeah, 'cause I'm gonna wanna hear what the plan is for fixing those issues along A1A. And I think a lot of that's gonna be like retention and those sorts of activities which can come out of that fund.
Yeah, yeah. We're just sticking in there as extra money to have for that overall project. Okay.
I know their plan inside and out. Tell you what. It's a good plan.
Well, I like it. It shows the focus of the CRA on addressing the primary issue.
Actually stepping up to what we said we wanted to do.
Two big parts of A1A, beach access and the looks of A1A. We're hitting both of those equally, so that's right on the money.
So you take the vote? Ron, what are we voting?
Okay, yes, yes, yes.
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 CRA member...
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Okay. We're halfway done.
Wow. Getting done early tonight.
The next item.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. And thanks for your patience with all of us. And I'm confusing myself, so I know I'm confusing you.
Next agenda item is discuss estimate for brick crosswalks along Cassia Boulevard with cost option to install future decorative lights. And we'll turn it over to Public Works Director, Mr. Alan Potter.
Good evening. Try to do this quick so we can all get out of here, right? I was asked to look into a couple of things for the Cassia project to enhance the Cassia project, which is going very well. Kinda surprised me how well it's going, actually. But it was for decorative lighting and for pavers along certain areas of the project. Specifically in front of the school, where the school crossing is at Time and Cassia, in the school driveways where the sidewalk would... We'd paint stripes across the driveways for crossing, across the church driveway and the city hall entrance and exit. So I got pricing for those areas and then just went ahead and priced out the rest of the crossings along the corridor and where the sidewalk is. And that's what you see in front of you, the total being 66,433,70. The lighting was a little different. I spoke with FPL, because FPL does have lights that we could actually take advantage of the program that they have. But they're limited in their selection of what type lights they have. I think... Did you... I have...
I've got some copies.
Pictures. You have the pictures?
Yeah, we can just pass them by so you can see. These just came out today. We've been trying to get all of the information together. I'd like to just send everything out.
Yeah, FPL hasn't been real easy to work with on this. The guy that I'm working with, he just... He's out in the field and he's back in his office and he's had a difficult time getting me pricing. But he said the pricing he couldn't get until we came up with the number of lights we needed and the type of lights we needed. So they wanna engineer an entire project at the same time and give us an estimate for that. So that's the reason why FPL couldn't be more definite on their lighting. We did get some cost estimates for lights that we were looking to replace at the dog park. We looked around, tried to find some quality product that's not going to give into the elements. And what we came up with was $900 per light, which is fiberglass, fiberglass poles, acorn lights. And then, of course, you'd have to have pads, which are about $7 apiece. But those can also be direct buried, but then you have to supply the power. The good thing about the FPL situation is that FPL installs and maintains the lights.
They just lease them from FPL.
Exactly, exactly. And that's what we do now with our streetlights. You know, there'd be probably a minimal... Well, we're talking FPL now. It probably wouldn't be minimal, but there would be a cost involved for the initial outlay and then probably an increase in what we're paying now as far as our lease agreement. But just the fact that we don't have to maintain the lights and they're going to install them, I think that's a savings there, so...
Can I ask, sir? Are we ready? Sure. Well, actually, I wanna give a little history behind this. I've been, a lot of people in the community have been coming up to me and asking about the Streetscape project. And they asked me specifically, oh, we're gonna do landscaping? Are we gonna do lighting? Is, you know, are we doing any decorative crosswalks? So I dropped my son off from school. I stopped in to see Alan, and I didn't know. I said, are we gonna be doing these things? And he said, no, it's not part of this project. And I'm like, well, is it possible that if you become part of the project? And what is the timeframe for the paving? Because they're gonna come in and repave, and we have a great opportunity to decrease the cost, because if they pave and we can try to retrofit later, we gotta salt cut the asphalt. You know, the concrete truck's not gonna be out there pouring. We have mobilization costs. And I said, do you think it's possible to do a change order? I did not ask him to put it on the agenda. I was gonna go back and ask for it to be put on the agenda. I said, is it feasible for the engineer to come up with costs quickly? Because when is paving scheduled for?
Soon. Couple of weeks, yeah.
Couple of weeks. So we have a limited opportunity to make a decision on this. I know it's a special meeting, but if we wait two weeks, we could miss out on an opportunity, if this is the way of the board. As far as the lighting, I think we really need to look at an overall master plan for the city, where we wanna do decorative lighting, perhaps on A1A or on Jackson. You know, Jackson has also been neglected for a long time with the high school games there. So we need to probably wait for the plan to evolve and those... Those features to be in there. But we do have some pavers on some of the beach accesses, and it's a great opportunity. And I didn't specifically, I don't think, I kinda ran in and out. I might've even been in my pajamas and said, hey, do it for all of them. Because typically you do decorative crosswalks, not on driveways, but on the roadways. And that's connectivity. You're connecting the west to the east. But because this is kind of the hub of the government center and the schools, I thought it would be nice, particularly because it is a little hub there, to maybe do them all along. And it would connect... And to be honest, I would throw in landscaping there, but I was specifically asked about, you know, the poles are old and they're crooked and lighting. But I think that's something we can tackle later. But I think we have a great opportunity to do some decorative crosswalks right now with the street being torn out, and it would decrease the cost.
Well, there is a landscaping plan that is very minimal landscaping. The only reason that it has to be minimalized is that, because of the slope.
Yes, it is, yes.
So we're very limited on what we can do as far as landscaping. I do have a plan, and what I'll do at your next meeting, I'll make sure that you get a copy of that plan.
I reckon come in and look at it. But I know that shade is an issue, especially when you get to the west side of Cassia. It's smoking hot, you know? And, you know, South Patrick Drive, I know we're gonna have the landscaping, but if you ever jog along there or walk along there, which I do, you're bacon. You're looking for little spots of shade along there. So I'd like to look at it. I know it's itch along most of it. There is a slope. But there is an opportunity to put some shade along there and make it more comfortable for pedestrians.
And we did discover a little connectivity issue today, because, you know, previously, the bike path was right along the roadway. People that lived on the north side of Cassia could just walk across the street to get to the sidewalk. Now, there's a swale in front of them. So I'm gonna go out tomorrow and look to see where there's areas that we can put some areas, basically, concrete bridges to allow people to get across into the sidewalk. And we'll just, you know, work that into the project. And if it would look nicer, maybe we could include that in this paver project, because that might be a nice addition and a nice enhancement.
What I was, the thought was, and I didn't know the scope of the project, because it's been going on for a long time, but it's taking a stormwater project and turning it into a Streetscape project, a real redevelopment project. And I don't really wanna be pinned specifically to this, because you could also do some crosswalks across Cassia from the south to the north or north to south, which would look beautiful, too. And also slow traffic down along there. And of course, the police are there 20, you know, when the school is in and out. But other times, I'm sure people speed along there. So, you know, it doesn't have to be specific to these areas. I mean, David, the engineer, he could certainly give his recommendations, but you could also get people across Cassia, north to south, with some of the decorative crosswalks, especially where the crossing guards are.
Right. So Cassia's gonna be repaved from end to end?
Cassia is gonna be repaved. Because of the money issue, we can only go to Temple. Both, we were gonna do just one lane all the way, and I didn't really like that idea. So we're gonna do from Temple, because Cassia actually was paved about five, six years ago. So it's not in that bad a shape. But we're gonna pave from Temple to South Patrick Drive, both sides. That's what we have money for in the grant.
And these recommendations here, are all of these going across Cassia or some of these from the side streets?
Some of these are, most of these are from the side, from the side streets. These parallel the sidewalks.
The south side of...
Yeah.
Okay, so the ones you starred, the ones that parallel the south side?
I'm sorry? I'm sorry?
You got seven starred here?
Yeah, the starred ones are the ones that, that Councilman Dean was talking about, that are in the hub area. Those are the ones where we get the most traffic, and they're, they're the most used by pedestrians.
Are those a mix of east-west and north-south, or are they all?
No, well, the, the, the only north-south one is the, the crossing at Cassia and, and Time. That's, that is the highly used one, where the kids cross, go to Surfside Elementary.
Okay. Good job of sorting them out.
Yeah, he did a great job, or you did, or whoever did.
I had a question. You, you said the, some of the areas that, that, like say, were Kale and Temple and some of these streets, you say there's not an easy access for a pedestrian or somebody to get up on the sidewalk?
Well, the, there's a, because of the design of the swale system for the stormwater, for the grant requirement, there was a swale on both sides. Well, it wasn't, in, you know, hindsight is 2020, thinking that we're going to have to get across that swale onto the sidewalk for the folks that live along Cassia that normally would have just walked across the street and get onto the bike path. So we, we discovered that late in the game, I'm sorry to say, but now we're looking at a fix for that. And so, so what we'll do is, like, you see on the Soto, where you have the bridge crossing the ditch, of course, we'll, we'll space them out so that they're evenly spaced, so that folks that live on Cassia, or folks that are coming from Temple or Kale, which they'll, those are easier, because, you know, there are street ends there. But the folks that live on Cassia don't really have a way to access the sidewalk.
Yeah, they have to go, like, there's a swale, and then the sidewalk, and then a.
So where do you get, do you have the money in your public works budget to fix that problem?
I think that, and I'm proud to say, that during these projects, we, we like to pinch pennies, so we, we have a little extra money that's within the budget of the project. So we may be able to work that out to where we can.
So you had a reserve for change orders, but you did such a great job planning the project, that there's no, you aren't using up the change order reserve?
Well, I wouldn't say that. I think there, there were some parts of the project that we changed for, because we really didn't need it, like, one of the, one of the issues in particular was, we had a temporary sidewalk planned for the north side of Cassia while this project was going on, so that we could move kids up and down, and pedestrians up and down Cassia during the project. Well, we decided that wasn't such a good idea, because it was going to cut right through everybody's front yards. So instead, we detoured kids down Ocean Spray and down Cinnamon, where there's a sidewalk, and it worked out great. I, you know, I, I just can't believe how well everything went, especially right after school started, because we were right in the middle of this project, and everything worked well. I mean, traffic flowed smoothly, there was no, no, no no even close calls with any situation, so.
You don't need CRA money to make these little crossovers?
Um.
Be committed to stormwater.
Alan, I got a question.
If you're, if you're going to build wooden crossovers, you're going to have to land it, when you land on Cassia, you're going to be right there on that concrete curb, right?
Right, no, I wasn't talking about wood. I was talking about building it up with, with base material, putting a pipe.
Culvert pipe.
Yeah, and just have, have a pipe flow through.
Okay.
And then, and it'll be concrete meeting the other.
Okay, so we'll look at a real sidewalk.
Right.
Yeah, that'll be, that'll be, that'll be.
Won't be a bridge.
If the swale is dry, it's not a problem, but if the swale, you know, when it's dry, they're going to walk wherever. When the swale is wet, it's a problem.
I don't have a, I, I kind of like, I've been to other communities that, that there's sig, you know, they have certain signatures, and, and there's one up by Destin I've been to, that all of the crosswalks are paved, paved crosswalks. And that, that's, that's very distinct. Yeah, and it makes a community stand out. And, you know, I don't know how many times I've been told by people, well, you can't tell the difference between Indian Harbor Beach and Satellite Beach, you just keep driving.
Well, I hadn't considered that.
Well, we could. I mean, eventually, we could have it in the, probably they'd be going to comp plan, I would imagine.
No, it's being the CRA plan.
Okay, well, well, but I'm talking throughout the city, not just within the CRA. So if it's throughout the city, it would have to be in the comp plan, right? So, so I would like to see us plan something like that, long-term. So maybe this could be the start of that, and we're working from the government center out.
Everywhere, yeah.
And we end up doing it everywhere. I think that'd be very cool. My only question is, is this particular project that you guys are looking at, and I don't have a, I had a problem with the way it came, because I thought, well, wait a second, I didn't talk about this. You know, it said here that the board asked for this to come up. I didn't talk about that, but I'm glad it happened because of the, you know, the, the timing of it, and I'm glad you took, you took that on. But my issue is, is can we, since, is this all going to be in the CRA? Would all of these crosswalks be in the CRA?
I do believe both sides of Cassia are in the CRA.
The CRA plan is interesting, because I, for the life of me, I can't figure out why Cassia, I mean, I guess a port, but the entire length of Cassia and Jackson is in the CRA. Doesn't mean that the city can't help fund it, the project.
Well, no, but I was, well, the other way, I don't want, I don't want the CRA to fund something that's not in the CRA and get into trouble.
Right. Oh, no, it's in the CRA.
Okay.
I'm still bewildered by why the entire length of Cassia.
But are the east, would the east-west crosswalks be in the CRA? Does it extend that wide?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, we can, we'll double check it.
We could do something continued upon confirming that the east-west, if we approve the east-west.
I, I kind of like that idea, but I would like to take the next step too, and maybe work it into the overall comp plan, that we make that a signature Satellite Beach.
And, and what I think you'll find too, is CGH should be coming to us back with, I, maybe they already did it, paver patterns to pick as part of the CRA to use throughout the city, for colors and things like that. So it's very distinct, and I've actually seen municipalities where they inlaid a city logo at an intersection, so.
Once we do this project, I'm kind of locked into paver patterns, if we want to be consistent.
I think we already have.
To be careful, we pick what we want.
I think they already have the pavers at the beach crossover.
Yeah, we have pavers at the beach crossover.
Pattern and color, and you would just continue.
Right.
So we already have a theme in place? Okay, as long as we already got a theme in place.
I have to tell you, in Cocoa, where, where, you know, I do work there all the time, they have this obsolete paver, and it's so difficult to get, but we constantly have to use it over and over again, and it's difficult. So hopefully, we have a standard brick that we're using that.
Right, and the bricks that are on the beach are, I mean, they're very nice looking, and they hold up well.
And so you use that same brick and that same pattern throughout the entire city.
Right.
Where's this money come from if we approve this?
The reserve.
The reserve?
The only place we have money. We, we put it all into the.
How much reserve do we have, Sheriff?
From this, it looks like $493,000.
That seems like enough to cover it.
Well, the only thing I was going to say, and Ed kind of made me think about this, these little crossings that I was thinking about building so that folks could access, if, I, it might be a nice enhancement if those were paved as well, just add something different to the, to the mix. And if that's, if that's possible, if that's a possibility.
Yeah, look at that smile.
We could maybe add it to this.
No, but, but is this the money for these little culvert crossovers?
Yeah.
They need, they need to be done, they, they should have been thought of.
And I, I just don't want to run into money, into trouble with the grant.
For the culvert crossover is kind of part of the, are they part of the crosswalk, like a continuation of the crosswalk?
They would be, yeah, they, they would be an attachment to the, to the sidewalk, basically, because.
To the crosswalk?
Oh, to the, to, well, they would be crosswalks.
Okay.
You know, I, you know, cross.
And all of these, all of these are crosswalks here, right?
Actually, well, I guess so.
Most of them are driveways.
Technically, they're, they're driveways, but they do.
Most of them are driveways.
Yeah, but it's a continuation of the sidewalk, is what it is. It's not really crosswalk.
Would the.
Technically.
Pattern of the pavers have to be laid such so that it appears like a crosswalk?
No.
No, it isn't.
No, the, the banding actually does that, because you have concrete banding on, on either side of the pavers, and then you have the pavers in between, so that gives the, the look of two lines, and then you have a different texture in the middle, so, you know, that identifies.
So you'd be able to diagonal type mosaic and then.
Yeah, you could do hair and bone, you could do diagonal, you could do.
So some of these will cross streets, and some of these will cross driveways?
Yeah, and that's not typical, but it is City Hall.
Well, yeah, well, I kind of like that idea, to be honest about it, because I like, because it gives kids that are walking, and this is a heavy kid traffic street.
Yeah.
A clear demarcation as to where they need to look about for cars, so they're, and this is all in a right of way, I take it, all these driveways, we're talking about right of way.
Right, oh, yeah.
So it gives the kids a clear demarcation when they're coming, saying, okay, I'm going from a sidewalk to a driveway, then they have a car backing down it, to a street that may have a car going down it, so I kind of like that idea.
And that fits right into our goal four for the CRA, which was safety issues.
Yeah, I don't know whether it'd look funny though, to have all these driveways with.
There's only, you don't, you, you have two driveways at City Hall, you've got a couple of church driveways, you've got the two driveways at the school.
Oh, these aren't really, these aren't private driveways?
No, not private driveways, no.
No, no.
These are, they're all along the south side of Cassia.
Right.
So there are no.
Oh, okay, okay, that's where I was getting mixed up at. Well, I, if we're going to do it, we should, if we, we've got this advantage. Now, do we need to do just up to Temple? Is that where the?
Well, the, the paving's going to be up to Temple, but we continue all the way up to A1A, because that's where the sidewalk's going, all the way up to A1A.
So this whole, this list of 17 projects is all the way up to A1A?
Alan, would that, would, would that include the crosswalks across A1A?
No.
No, that's, you have to get a DOT permit for that, which isn't impossible, by the way.
Right, well, and you know what, there might be great opportunities soon, because they're going to repave.
And did you kick in some of the cost for that?
So there may be, there may be a great opportunity there, you know, maybe work with DOT, if there might be some opportunity there, I could look.
Isn't there a plan as part of the, as part of the beach access improvement, to put some sort of high-visibility crosswalk that comes across the streets, that goes towards the beach access as well?
I think the original plan for the streetscape was to have like a safety island going across, with possibly a median, and I'm not really familiar with the whole CRA plan for A1A, I wasn't privy to that. So, but I think that was one of the, one of the goals of the, of the CRA and the streetscape plan at that, at that time, was to, to give people an opportunity to be able to get across A1A. There was traffic coming, and there was not signalized, they could get to one point, one point and be safe, and then when the traffic cleared, they could go across A1A and, you know, to the other side. So does a crosswalk meet that goal? No, because it's not signaling, it's, I mean, it'll look nice, but it's not going to slow people down.
Typically, crosswalks do slow people down. You can actually raise them a little bit, and they, they do, they do, and they visually slow you down.
And if you have a marked sidewalk, you can, without signals, you can put signs there like they have in Vieira, in the roundabout there, and they have, more, more and more you're seeing them, that they have sidewalks where you have to stop.
I would prefer the word roundabout not be used ever. Alan, is there enough flexibility in your current contract funds that you have available to add the bricks to the little culvert overpasses?
I doubt we could do the bricks. I know we could do concrete.
What, do you have a ballpark figure? Or what that additional cost would be?
Well, I think the question is too, how many of those culvert crossovers would there be?
Yeah, I'd probably put three, um, three and three six, so you'd add six, and you're probably talking eighty, eighty square feet, so.
So eighty square feet.
Eighty square feet times.
Four hundred and eighty one.
Six.
I have another question, because that, the, the swale along the road is pretty narrow, and so you're actually going to have almost a sidewalk, really, where people, does that have to be ADA compliant?
Um.
Because you're not going to have a lot of room then.
No, because you're not, actually, all they are is, is ramp, they're, they're just accesses, they're not connecting sidewalk to sidewalk. They were connecting sidewalk to sidewalk, and I don't think you have to worry about, like, on ADAs, if you're over a certain di, or less than a certain distance away from each other.
Just, can you just add?
Yeah.
They're going to be wide enough for wheelchairs, though.
Oh, yeah, thirty, yeah, thirty six inch.
But I, and I wondered, and just kind of thinking out loud now, if pavers are a detectable surface, I don't know if.
They have pavers with the little humps in them.
Right, so you could throw, you know.
And how, how good are the numbers that you have here? Are these contractor bid numbers, or are these?
These are actually contractor bid numbers.
From the current contractor?
From the current contractors.
So if we wanted to do this, we could issue a change order to the contract with the CRA funding, agreeing to fund that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Is the banding concrete, or is that?
Concrete.
So they're locked in nice.
Yeah, they're just, it holds everything together.
So what would you guys think about approving this, adding another 10 grand contingency on there to cover the little overpasses on the cul-de-sacs, only to be spent in the amount of the bid?
No.
The little crossovers he's talking about, where you can put a little sidewalk over the cul-de-sac?
That needs to come out of the stormwater utility fund.
Is there money in the stormwater utility fund to do that?
I don't know, Brenda left. She's, she's the.
It's, uh, it's part of the stormwater project, and it was a, kind of a snafu on their end by not dealing with it to begin with. I don't think the CRA should.
I'll check in, I'll check into that, but I was just looking at the figures, because if you add two and three together, Alan, if you, you know, you're talking 480 square feet, you know, you might be talking at maybe about 7,000 then, yeah.
Well, here's, uh, 480 square foot, like, you take number six, school east driveway, 480 square feet to 360 square feet.
Five thousand.
Thirty-three, it's five fifty-one hundred bucks.
Can we handle this on two motions? I'm thinking one motion to approve this, and a second motion to approve a fund to do the other little bits contingent upon, uh, stormwater, contingent upon the availabilities? I don't know if I'm saying it right. If there's stormwater funds available, we are going to provide it, but if there's no local funding.
Well, I think we need to ask ourselves, if it's not available, would we, would we be spending CRA money legally to do it?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, that's a good question. I'm hesitant to do that.
Okay, now, do you need that answer?
Well, he was going to do them anyway.
Yeah, I'm going to do them anyway. I would do, I want, they're either going to be concrete, or they're going to be paver, I just thought, since.
It's business of money, man.
Since we're doing the pavers, I could, I could at least lobby for it anyway.
Would you need that answer before the next CRA meeting?
Yeah, what's your timeframe?
When is next year, did you say 11?
It's not part of your contract, so you can do it anytime.
Right, I could, I could actually do it, you know, I could put concrete down now and, and put paper, you know, thin papers over top, I wouldn't want to do that, but that's kind of a waste of money.
Even a year from now or something.
Right, it's not, it's not part of the bargain that's going on there right now.
Right.
Whereas this is, because they're either going to pave this.
Right.
Or contract, and then we've got to pay to tear it out, and some payback.
I say, let's just be safe, and let's just do these.
And there's a real savings to doing these now, because we don't have to do concrete cutting and stuff like that, because they're doing.
Asphalt.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll move that we approve the entire 17 project list to be paid for auto reserve funds.
And, and just before you, and allow them some flexibility to adjust if the engineer feels appropriate on some of the crosswalks, instead of being committed?
Oh, sure.
If that, if you don't mind?
No, but I'm not, that's fine, that makes sense. Do we need, do we need to bump the number up a little bit to counter contingency?
Do you have to put like a safety number in there, a certain percentage or something, or?
Yeah, I'd like to go like.
Ten percent.
Ten percent over another 6,600 dollars on top of the 66 is a contingency.
Hmm.
Alan, I'm just used to that, most construction projects, when you're designing them, you put contingency in there.
Actually, I just noticed one thing. Do we, do we really want to do on the other end, the decorative crosswalks in the town home driveway, since it's not the hub of the community, that would take some of that money out of there?
The same, the same Bray Properties, what is that? Is that the Realtor up there on A1A?
That's the real, that's the, um, where, well, we're going to, we're either.
Across from Bumpy, or.
Yeah, we're either going to paint that up there, or, um, we're going to do the pavers. We, we want to delineate that sidewalk, because we want to.
I think, I mean, my thinking is, consistent with the theme, is to go all the way from one end to the other.
Okay.
Because then you've got two at the end of the street that don't matter anything else.
If we're going to try to get DOT to buy into the, the crosswalks across A1A, and then it'll all be contiguous.
That's true, because that's a, that's a signalized intersection, isn't it? Yeah.
And I, and I have to say this, it's been on my mind since Councilman Billman said it, I have had more people comment on this project than any project we've ever done in the city, and everything very positive. So I think what, this idea is a great idea, and I, and I really think that this could change the way people view Satellite Beach, because, I mean, folks are coming down Cassia to come to City Hall, coming to church, coming to school, and this is what they're seeing. to come to City Hall, coming to church, coming to school, and this is what they're seeing. They're seeing...
I agree.
A new, a new look.
I agree, and when we get these across, and that's the other thing, we need to, to take this and put it in the comp plan, so, so with your other half, if you can, if you can make sure that, that happens. But, when we get these across A1A and across South Patrick, and people come across them at the borders of our city, they're gonna be, boom, I mean, Satellite Beach, and this looks pretty cool. And everywhere you turn, every time you go across a crosswalk, it's gonna be these cool paved crosswalks.
That's why I wanna keep the thing going all the way up and across these layers, too.
Yeah, the beach access is, along the beach access, that really enhances it as well.
And then, also too, I've never seen so much activity, really, in the mornings, because now I have to drive two kids to school two different times, just the people jogging and walking and strolling, it's pretty amazing.
It's a gorgeous sidewalk, it's a beautiful sidewalk, a big improvement.
Yeah, I have to give, I have to give kudos to Robert Sedgwick-Breno, because he talked me into, into the, as he called it, the chicaning, you know, I thought, you know, maybe a little bit of, a little bit of meandering sidewalk would look nice, but, but once I saw the first, the first portion of it go in along the FPL ditch out here, I thought, man, that does look boring, and, and I kinda gave him, you know, carte blanche to do what he wanted within a certain, you know, and he did, he did a great job, and I have to applaud him for that.
And FYI, when the sandscaping goes in along South Patrick, we have taken those curves, I don't know if you remember, but those angles, and they are gonna be curved now, because you can't even ride your bike along there, it's pretty ridiculous, so, it'll make a big difference.
Okay, so we got, I think I made a motion for approving the 17-project list, and I wanted to add 6,600 dollars for a reserve, is that too much? Ten percent, an additional 10% for the reserve, so whatever.
Seventy-three thousand.
Seventy-three thousand, okay.
And you made a motion there second?
Okay.
Number... Let's go ahead and open this up for public comment. Any, would you comment on this topic?
I'd like to.
Ron, you're required to comment, now, you cannot not comment. You've got, you're very close to Guinness Book of World Records here.
You're right.
Those consecutive comments that a city council, city under 12,000.
Ron Giudice, Satellite Beach resident, the next hurdle unfortunately here, in a positive sense, and this would, this would distinguish the community, and I, I think everyone's on board on this, and I like this too, and many are gonna like this, crossing before you pave, since you paved it four years ago, and I know this is money, but crossing Cassia, have you guys thought on the main streets, for instance, Temple or where, or Cale, where you have a cross going across the road?
The turnouts, you mean, the turnouts going into? Yeah, yeah, those are all, those are all gonna be paved. Once we get the pavers in, those turnouts will be repaved, because they've all been paved.
No, I'm talking like having the...
North-south.
North-south the pavers.
There's nowhere to go.
Oh, yeah.
There's no sidewalk on the sidewalk.
Okay, I'm just, out there.
You can't crosswalk with nothing there, the ADA would...
Right.
Somebody gets it.
On time, we're gonna do it.
Oh, it's on time? We're gonna do time.
Okay, thank you.
That's an important area there.
That's it.
Thank you, Ron.
ADA will get you.
So some of these are north-south ones, right?
More public comment?
The only, the only north-south one that we have is the Time, trying to...
Which one is that?
This one right by the school.
By the school.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, that's where I was, that's where I was thinking.
Michelle French resident, I think it's a great idea, I think this is one of those areas that people, everybody kinda sees, as opposed to the beach crossovers, that not everybody goes up to the beach, and not everybody sees how beautiful they look. So I think this is a great idea, and I think the continuity is important, so don't cut a portion out, I think that is important, and I think your idea of doing Jackson is awesome. I think Jackson looks pretty poor compared to most of the other places in the city, but when money is available. Thank you.
Okay. Money that benefits everyone. More public comment? All right. We have a motion by Senator Lindbergh, and seconded by Senator Billman. Ready for that?
Senator Robinson?
Yes.
Senator LeDoux?
Yes.
Senator Billman?
Yes.
Senator Lindbergh?
Yes.
Senator, excuse me, Mike Sherwood?
Yes. Now, a question, when's gonna be our next opportunity to look at the CRA plan and make sure that we're integrating this effort into the bigger Satellite Beach effort, and then the comp plan?
And you forward info to them?
Yeah, I'll be talking with Jeff about this, since you have voted on this, the board has voted, and we'll take it, take it forward.
But now that, but now that we've set precedent with using the CRA funds for Cassia, since Cassia's in the CRA, Jackson's in the CRA too, right? So that's what I'm saying, I'm saying that, you know, what's the next step? Maybe we need to flow out the next step within the CRA plan for...
They will do that, you just come in, right?
There's a segment along Jackson where the school is, and if I recall correctly from the GIS information, the north side of Jackson, where the big sidewalk, you know, the thick sidewalk is, that that's not considered the CRA, that only the south side of Jackson and those houses.
That doesn't make sense, I'll have to look at it.
Thank you.
Isn't it the World Coast Office?
I don't know that one.
That is.
But anyway, you get the gist of what I'm saying.
We've talked about Jackson many times.
Yeah, I'll look at it.
And then after Jackson, whatever the next bid is, but we have to have this plan, you know, to get there. And my last question is, is when we're coordinating with DOT on the major thoroughfares, I take it, we're also gonna have to coordinate with them when we do the crossovers on South Patrick?
Well, no, no, because those, those are actually, they're in there right away, but they've already approved our plan.
Okay.